Good evening, everyone. We are broadcasting live on YouTube again. It's a visual and audio recordings and they're available for anyone's access at any time. For all those watching on YouTube, tonight's our regular meeting. Regularly advertised meeting. I encourage you all to come out. If you'd like to come out and participate live. Thank you for watching. Feedback that I've been getting. The feedback that I've been getting has been positive. And I thank you.
Okay, so, alright, so we'll just amend the agenda then. That's what I thought, sometimes start doubting myself. Well, that's, that's under executive session because it's under personnel executive session. If you weren't to appoint them, we would amend the agenda to include that before Germany. Right, because you had the two, those two proposals to look over it last month.
There's not a play, it's ball sports?
Uh, no. There's not baseball, right? Yeah, yeah, yeah. Yeah.
She's 13.
Seven. She's actually only 12.
No.
She's that great. Are you sure? All the time. I believe she's 52. She just, uh, she's in place. And she's. She's playing, so I don't have a timeline. You can tell me the same thing. It's a different. It's a different. Yes.
I feel like I'm sitting with. And it's never, it's never gonna, never gonna be quite right. At least it's not freezing cold anymore down, so I'm happy. Yeah. Store or something. Yeah, that's, yeah, that's all right. Yeah, I've learned to be very adaptable.
We'll call the September 17th. We have some township regular work schedule. We order seven o'clock. We go to the pledge allegiance and home of silence for all military personnel.
Pledge allegiance, salute thy United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Hi, welcome. This is.
Here. Here.
Mr. Bedler.
Here.
Uh, we have citizens concerned. Any citizens concerned this evening? Uh, if not rich correspondent.
Alright, P. Ward. So we had two pieces correspondence in the last meeting in our workshop and you had asked me to look into what we've shouldn't pass relative to the Brooks County Conservation District. 2024 made an $800 contribution and from 2020, '21, '22, and '23 made a $700 contribution. So, you know, if you want to make a motion seeking to make a contribution to them and amount equal to something we had in 2023 or '24.
I'll second that. Before we vote, which line item would you, is that in?
I'd have to, honestly, pull that through. I don't have it in.
Maybe going forward, you want to put that?
Okay.
You'll put that in, much like the police do?
Absolutely.
Uh, motion is sent. Welcome, Mr. Gullum.
Yes.
Mr. Gullum.
Yes.
Mr. Rose?
Yes.
Mr. Bedler?
Oh, yes.
Oh, yes.
Alright, as for the second one of those two piece correspondence, I have for Spook River Greenways, request for donation. Recommended donation amount, I can only suggest this in front of you, Spook River Trail Map. We could do something similar to the $700 range to them. We had not contributed to them in the past, so it's, it's really an open page for us as a, as a township. We do have a fair number of miles that run through province townships, so might be something nice to do.
Now, did the bike come from them?
No, the bike came from the First World Water.
Yeah.
And we have it before. At the same time, there's some paths here.
I don't think there's immediate need. We could move that into our October workshop. You wouldn't get some kind of thing about it. Um, meantime, I'll also give you a line item for that though.
Yeah.
Okay. Alright, anything else for responders?
Just around this time.
Yeah, Sergeant Remy.
P. Ward. Uh, the first thing I have on the agenda is to request permission for Corporal Cooper and I to go to the first responders grant funding seminar. It's September 30th and it's free of charge. Um, this is where we got our grant funding for our vehicles from.
Where is this?
It's at the Langston Farm Center.
I'll make that motion to send Sergeant Remy and Corporal Cooper. This is your first, both to me, your first grant type seminar.
Yes.
The extra special attention. We could, we could use them.
I'll try.
I do.
I'll second that, it's on your calendar.
Welcome, Mr. Gullum.
Yes.
Mr. Don?
Yes.
Mr. Rose?
Yes.
Mr. Bedler?
Yes.
Oh, yes.
Thank you, Ward. The next thing I have is, uh, we are still obtaining the additional quotes for the building repair. Uh, we've reached out to several different companies and hopefully they'll have them through us this week. That's all I have.
Anything else for the rest?
For St. John?
Anything else? Right, Rich Finance.
Okay. Uh, with regard to finance, uh, if you had monthly expenses, treasure reports, or age report, we'll provide in workshop packet and I'll address the, um, that. We'll get a motion to approve this as provided in workshop packet.
Do you believe the sewer aging report is in order? Do you believe that?
I believe that it is as accurate as we can possibly have at this point in time, sir.
I think a motion should set the reports in our, yeah, in our possession.
So it's a motion for the monthly expenses, treasure reports, surgery.
Yes.
One second. Welcome, Mr. Gullum.
Yes.
Mr. Gullum.
Yes.
Mr. Rose?
Yes.
Mr. Bedler?
Oh.
Oh, yes.
Okay, last item on the finance other. So we have a request, uh, responsibility for the minimum municipal obligation, MMO, uniform, non-uniform and non-uniform defined contribution plans. This is for 2025, but we actually have to make the motion here to approve that resolution for 2024. It has to be done in the month of September. So to 2024 resolution for 2025. Has to be done in the month of September. That is actually in your packet and it shows you what our estimates are for those defined contributions, non-uniform defined pension plan and non-uniform defined contribution plans. It's actually the second one of the two. If this were to be approved, uh, the seating would be 2024-20. And if you understand what I mean. Again, this is, this is something that goes to Chuck Friedlander and our, our pension program.
And this was not in the workshop session?
That, that's correct, sir.
And it wasn't in there, why?
They were still working through the numbers at the workshop.
And Chuck is a brilliant man, so.
He's a brilliant man, but he's quite capable of preparing that in advance so that we don't get something at three o'clock this afternoon and then expect a vote on it now.
Isn't this all calculated by the amount that has to be put in by each individual based on what they're gonna make next year? So, I'd say you have a fair assessment. That it's within a couple dollars of what it needs to be. Unless you give him raises and then that's not calculated in unless he calculated. So, from an accounting standpoint, I'd say we're required by law to give what we have to give. It's not like we're giving extra money. That's not the objective.
It's not a matter of extra money. It's a matter of being organized, planning ahead.
It's a matter of criticizing, complaining.
I'd like to see a list of those contributing and because someone prepares it as a rather matter of routine does not make it not subject to review.
Also, it doesn't make it wrong what it might be.
I've never suggested that it was wrong. I suggested. I suggested that it was subject to review.
Uh, the $64,000 to me seems a little excessive. We have two people in that plane.
It's very, it's very excessive. What were they last year?
I, I don't remember what the number was last year.
Do you know, Richard? What were they?
I mean, we have, what, six officers in? When you calculate that with the police are versus what the two people are, it seems like a lot of money. My recollection is contributing 32,000 a piece to them.
Depends on what they're making. How much are they contributing? They also have an option to contribute now.
Well, you have to contribute a whole lot more to make a grand budget.
If I retake correctly, it's about $30,000 more for the uniform than it was last year.
I find it depressing clarification if it's like a fistful.
Chris, I'd ask my colleagues on the board to speak up clearly so we can be recorded and broadcast. I'm having trouble hearing it.
This was prepared by Chuck using the year-end payable numbers for 2024, so.
Yeah, I was just looking for his emails. His emails are here and he has numbers and they're all in good place and he just now he's doing everything. Well, let's see, there's one little slide here. He has normal cost of loaning for the non-uniform plan for the increase from $8,718 to $12,783. That was one of those things which I don't know about. It equals 64. Now, Rich, do you actually have an email from him that had those numbers in it? That you can easily?
Pull up something directly from.
I think we just said it's a lot from him.
Oh, it seems if you wanted, may have a spreadsheet in it. Put it up in here then.
Maybe I'll just forward it to him. Oh, you don't have to pull it up on the phone.
There it is. There is one. Okay, let me see if I can't forward this.
And with each of those, it was a slight uptick from these most recent calculations. So the spreadsheet that I'm looking at is uniform defined pension benefit plan was at 147, 139. Saying he made a further calculation, which I don't have that one here. And that came at 152, 902. Uh, and that looks like for the non-uniform. You should have that, Dr. Smith, so.
Yeah.
Uh, and then for the second one, he did come in at 63, 970 uh, for the non-uniform. And that then rose very slightly again to 64, 400. And then the last one was the DC plan, which came in 14,323 and rose very slightly to 15,436 based on more than likely a refined calculation as, as the numbers get a little bit more accurate.
So this is what, you shouldn't say 20, 24, 20, right?
Yes.
Alright, I know. I'm motion to approve resolution 24, 20.
I'll second.
Welcome, Mr. Gullum.
Yes.
Mr. Gullum.
Yes.
Mr. Rose.
I, I'm gonna go now.
Mr. Bedler?
No.
Oh, yes. Alright, then I just comment.
Thank you, Ward. Alright, again, talk about personal evaluation at the workshop. Currently ongoing on Thursday completion date. And we'll have those before end, as soon as we have an opportunity to, to establish some time to sit down and talk with the employees. We'll obviously let you know that when it's, it's. Um, yeah, now this would be a DCD grant resolution for the workshop. Chair and vice chair, we added your names to that uh, for that resolution. That is also something that I have here before the end of the month. Uh, that is in your package proceeding with the additional signatures on there. And that would be 2024-21 if so approved.
I'll make a motion to approve that decision 24, 21.
Alright, I'll make a motion to approve resolution 2024, 21. Oh, you did?
Yeah. Please second.
I'll second.
Welcome, Mr. Gullum. Mr. Gullum?
Yes.
Mr. Rose?
Yes.
Mr. Bedler?
Yes.
Oh, yes.
Thank you, Ward. Get that to the signer again and get that to Mr. Scholter for possession. Okay, the last few things, public works vacancies. And then that closed yesterday. I did not have an opportunity today to review the application. I believe we have four either and or five. And I want to double check that. And I will provide you with an email update as soon as I have that set. I'll let you know when we're gonna do the interviews for those. And again, of course, you'll be invited. Alright, and the last piece I have, uh, this was a request by, um, our officers either. They, they looked into a 457 plan. This is more informational for you. There would be no contribution from the township for this. 457 plan is essentially a retirement contribution type plan that they can draw upon rather than something that's like their defined, uh, their uniform contribution plan. So what this would be, and I believe you could probably speak to it a little bit more accurately. So they added some other townships, other municipalities use this. The employee contributes to that. Some townships do actually facilitate. Uh, we would not because we already have a, um, a, uh, uniform contribution plan and pension fund. So this would be for them to decide if they'd like to contribute. Um, they can control that as they need to. It would be a slight administrative time for us to do that. Probably somewhere near around 10, 10 minutes every pay period that we would have to make sure that it was processed correctly. The first time we would do it might be, you know, 15 or so just if anybody would like to contribute. And that would go to anybody in the township, not just our officers on duty. So just want to bring that to your attention again. There's very many classes associated. If you'd like more information, uh, we can then bring back to our next meeting. You said you had an opportunity to review what, what the input is. Our request, again, township's not making any contributions, so.
We've discussed the contract negotiations next year. I believe it's Harold talked to the board. He was on board during the contract negotiations for the 457 plan. Then we had a meeting with our pension company to see if they offered it. Um, and if the board is willing to look into it to provide it to all the boards, not just police. And just kind of went by the wayside because of the contracts and just moving to the new year, being busy and kind of like to see where you guys stand on it.
There are some fees associated with a register of the accounts. So you're going to pay the bank, somebody's going to pay the bank, either the township or the employee.
It's the employees in this particular.
So, you know, that stuff these guys, but the accounts with the fiduciary are set up so that you can do a four-fifty-seven plan. We did that one little problem. And I think you all want to run it through Chuck for you later.
I understand, yeah.
Okay, I'll bring that to our next meeting, just so we're just moving forward. With that, that's all I have for my notes.
You said it.
You said the monthly buyer report and our breakfast, our taco, in October, or monthly breakfast?
Oh, I have. Would that be the six for the person?
Yes.
All right, so, roll call, Mr. Joy.
Yeah.
Mr. Gollum. Mr. Rose.
Yes.
Mr. Bittler.
Vote no.
No, but yes.
Good evening, board. All of my action items were addressed at the workshops. I have them removed. Quick update, and the first appears always shows up later under Public Works. Both Barry and myself have been corresponding back to teaching K. They have pushed the start of our work to April fourteenth, which in some ways helps us. We are keeping an eye, the contract has to be complete by ten thirty-one for Penda funding standards. So we're in discussions with them regarding that. Right now, we're in that time slot. It gives our crew some time to address some other situations and answer that work. Additionally, there was a conflict when they were in the earlier time slot with materials coming out south. They were dedicated to a Penda, or I'm sorry, Turnpike project. So this may end up helping us logistics. So that's all, just an update. I will keep those updates coming as they're available. That's all I have.
So let's move on to that.
Yes, I'll need an amendment to the agenda because of the advertisement of the solicitation ordinance for tonight.
Why would we need an amendment if it wasn't on the, why isn't it on?
Sorry.
We knew this was coming, correct?
Yes.
And this has been advertised.
It has been advertised.
And so why isn't it on the agenda?
I believe prior procedure was that it was advertised. It wasn't necessarily on the agenda.
Prior to.
Regardless whether it's a prior procedure or necessarily required, I think it would be good procedure to have it on there.
I agree.
Well, why, why do we go through this?
In the future, we'll make sure that it is on the agenda. My proceed, my preferred procedure is to have it on the agenda. I understand prior procedures it wasn't. However, there was plenty of public notice of it because it was advertised in the newspaper, was authorized for advertisement, and has been extensively discussed and had been revised after the first draft. So there's plenty of public notice of it.
Regardless of that solicitation, it's just sloppy on point of this township.
Can it be an amendment or an emergency at this point?
Because it's been, it's been advertised. It's been advertised, so I believe we can when it's already advertised.
Do you have the proof of advertising?
No, I'll ask you to say.
Yes, right here. And it was advertised in the Reading Eagle on September sixth.
Yeah.
And I have a signed proof of advertisement from the media group.
I don't know what we can do. I'll make a motion to amend the agenda to the solicitation ordinance.
I'll second that.
Roll call, Mr. Joy.
Thanks.
Mr. Gollum.
You don't say no because I don't think we can amend it for that at this point. It's not an emergency, so I don't see that.
That's what we're going to try and suggest our.
Am I incorrect?
I think you're correct, yeah. I don't think we need to do it.
I would say not do it. I guess my understanding of the emergency amendments less than twenty-four hours is emergency. Just don't want to be, am I incorrect?
My, my.
I know we've talked about it, but is this, is somebody going to get hurt?
It was an emergency.
No, I mean, my, my belief was, is that it was authorized for advertisement. And so it's already, it's already, there's already public notice of it. I'm not even sure it needs to be on the agenda. I think it's better if it is, but it's already authorized and there's plenty of notice of it.
You're scurrying the issue, it's on you. Your notice is no.
Mr. Rose.
I'm not saying about that, yeah.
I'm a no.
Okay, well, I mean, it's already been advertised, so.
It's on there.
Traditionally, didn't we do this at the beginning of the meeting with ordinances?
A hearing at the ordinance, we've always done at the beginning of the meeting.
Well, this, I, I don't know what your prior procedure was as far as the timing of it. If there, this is one where there isn't a public hearing. For a land use ordinance such as a subdivision of land development ordinance amendment, zoning ordinance amendment, there would need to be a public hearing. And if there's, and so you would do that to get the court reporter in and out quickly and to, to address that part of the meeting. Normally, an ordinance is don't under the solicitor's support. And I was going to say, I know when we have a public meeting right in the beginning, but.
All right, so just add that next month. What else you got? Mr. Bundy?
Okay, sure. The next item is the, is township files. The, your prior solicitors at Hartman, Valeriano, McGovern, and Lutz are having a common problem that law firms have, which is running out of space and paying a lot of money for remote storage of old files. And they're, in their case, going back approximately twenty years or more for this township. I was contacted by their office administrator regarding, asking whether or not this township wanted any or all of its files returned. I have been speaking with Mr. Howitt about it and also, I've also spoken with their office administrator as well as attorney McGovern and attorney Mayfield about the township files. And we have determined that they should be returned to the township. And we are in the process of arranging a date that township employees can retrieve them from Hartman office.
I'm not sure why our attorneys were deciding what happens with our property. We were given direction to get those back. I volunteered to get those back at my own time and bring them here. You may remember that, Chuck.
I do remember.
Okay, and two years later, you know, here we are. I, I'm very interested in going through those. There are gaps in a lot of things and when we get here, you know, I'm looking forward to going through those files.
All, I was contact, I was the one contacted. I passed it along to the manager and oh, I'm not deciding what comes back and what doesn't. That's the township's decision, just to ring the logistics of it.
I understand sort of per discussion at the workshop that we are in fact looking to bring all the back. We have improved Public Works to go get that. What I've asked for from them is essentially an idea of the amount of cubic yardage that we're looking at. It was a, is a, you know, how many truckloads am I planning? Or what do I need to do to plan to get that back with our Public Works? Once we do that, the idea is we're bringing all those files back, store them with us because we've made some space in the upstairs messing at this point. As we've moved many of the files downstairs, either our Kermit files and such will come downstairs so they're accessible by the codes officer. So we'll have some room upstairs to store those and we can go through them as we have the opportunity. So we'll work on it. We'll say it's probably going to be after mid-October, so we'll need to coordinate that as well just because that's when the roadwork will get wrapped up and I'll have the freedom to do that with our Public Works team.
Any else, Terry?
Yes, Quaker Ridge Phase Five Acceptance of Roadways of Dedication. We have recorded the instrument for the Declaration of Covenants and Restrictions, which attached acknowledgement of buyer's obligations including maintenance of the stormwater best management practices features. The last step will be acceptance of the roadway and preparation of deeds of dedication. The resolution is, is in the process of being prepared as well as the deeds of dedication. And we ask for authorization for the deeds of dedication so that they can be signed between meetings.
That's correct.
Correct.
The energy not until October, I tell you, it's a script.
Right.
We could, we could resolve this tonight, though, if this is routine, right?
Excuse me?
We could resolve this tonight if this is routine.
If this is routine, yeah, then it's routine to, deeds of dedication are a routine matter.
We just don't have them in front of us.
Right.
Is there any prejudice or harm or delay to anyone if we wait till next month or?
I don't believe so. And, and as I was told, they weren't expected until October. However, we can do them sooner with authorization.
Well, I can tell you, there's at least one guy that will be upset, and that's the guy whose child's got to walk all the way out to the end of that road every day to catch the school bus, because the school buses have been going on the King Street.
So we can basically just agree to the resolution and you can sign it later.
Right, so they think the deeds of dedication can be signed and recorded prior to the opening meeting. It can be done.
Subject to our thorough review of our.
Subject to review, yes.
Our thorough review. So I'll make that motion and we prove this tonight, subject to thorough review.
Roll call, Mr. Joy. Mr. Gollum.
Yes.
Mr. Rose.
Yes.
Mr. Bittler.
Yes.
No, but yes.
That's all I have.
I'll just point out the consistency. We didn't do the solicitation or anything. We had more information than we have as others, but we don't.
If you want to listen on the agenda, my concern is that was on my own concern.
I don't know that's inconsistent. I, I dispute that at all.
Okay, all right. So anything for Public Works, which?
All right, as, as already mentioned by our engineer, I used to get paid and was pushed back to the fourteenth. And then based on care for product, we'll start on September thirtieth. The good news with that, and I think this is one of these cross coordination pieces that we've been looking to improve. As we had our meeting last night with the RTMA, one of the issues of discussion was making sure that we're repairing and, and or building up our manhole covers and the manhole, those sleeves for those. So this gives us opportunity to get John from E and M A and Barry together to kind of complete those two pieces together. So those are going, they're milling and they're patching. We can also work on those manholes and sleeves as well at the same time, making sure that those are done correctly. And we're not having issues with that in the future. Because that's, as you may recall, when we had the work that was done out on Killian insider drive, there were a couple of those that had been paved over completely, and two, yes, to be exact. One of them, I think, was almost a foot down, if I recall. So this is, this is great for us to do these things the right way. Again, that's already pretty important. So we'll work those things out here from there. And then the other note here, again, Barry senses regrets. He wasn't feeling well this evening. That's just a note from him that Aquabody on the water may replace Cape Creek, Kinko and Sparrow on the twenty-third. So I have.
No, we're going to depart the NAC.
Nothing to see in this, or in the current workshop.
Who does your old business there?
Nothing to discuss there, sir.
I want to executive session at seven thirty-five.
Hey, a quick clip. With the dedication of the roof, there's a resolution here. I need to turn it back to the resolution or the number.
That, that would be actually twenty-two when we get to that point, but I would, my, my understanding is that we would not. Correct, we're destroying the resolution until this month. We're going to deeds of dedication for thorough, thorough review. The resolution will be prepared for and then if adopted, it will be signed.
Terry, if I'm not being very accurate, maybe it's.
No, I think you're, neither of things. Mostly legal issues.
It is, yes.
Right, let's check.
He's going on.
Uh, yes, I believe so.
You didn't have that.
Yeah.
Not that. Still getting to that through the video.
Yeah, she.
If I may. Had a late agenda this.
Oh, they're coming. We're just. It's just like, we see quite a lot. Irresponsible there.
No problem.
Yeah, that's correct.
Everybody says that.
Wait, we're pinned up.
Yes.
This might finish her work.
I think so, unless executives like last, um, last Thursday night, the executive lasted longer than the meeting.
Well, if that's happened. Oh, Rich was going to have to pull a couple of ordinances for me. Have you ever seen it, you did?
Tell me what, do you know what they are, kind of that hands?
I don't. When I was up there making copies, there was, one of the books wasn't there.
It was on the bottom shelf, because Rob said, didn't I say you should, and I pulled it out. It was on the bottom shelf, yeah.
So, and, and so I didn't make those two.
Right, well, if you want to email me.
What numbers they were.
Yeah, or what numbers they were. I can.
Yeah, I also want to, well, I'll leave it to you because I also want to talk to if our agreement would be. I'll make sure that we're not paying for what we're supposed to. We just paid them sixty dollars an hour immediately.
I'll do that. Thank you for that.
Yeah, well, that's where I was at. And that's for Richard, you know, hey, you need to let us know. We can send, we have a guy that does that.
Yes, yeah. Township can do that for like, you know, food and thermers.
Oh, this, I could, it's seven hours.
Seriously?
Seven hours.
What was he laid like?
Yeah, pumping stations.
They could have laid concrete faster.
He might, he might have had one of those old weed whackers they always on their flow.
Must have been a site.
A site.
Or scissors.
So we, we should just rent goats and put them inside defense for, for a couple of weeks and pull them out.
They eat everything. I was like, I seen them what they ate on one day, one time it was on the.
I actually looked at putting the Highlands in because they're very goat-like when it comes to eating anything.
Really?
Yeah, they'll eat anything. And I mean, that's why you find them in the Highlands with the bogs and everything else, and they'll eat anything. And then their hoof is open design so that doesn't get hoof rot very easy. And they're cute.
Pretty sick. There's quite a few goats in the township too, or like in the areas off around us.
There's, there's actually people have a business that'll bring goats out, they'll put temporary fence up and let them devour everything and to clean up your squirrel.
Because they eat poison ivy and everything. They're the one animal apparently that doesn't get cancer.
Oh, is that right? Oh, is that right?
It's goats.
They're like, they're tough to keep in, though.
They're minded their own idea, yeah. It's like that yogurt people do, those spicy goats.
Years ago, when I was a kid, we had a pony, and we had a lead on the pony, and a cement block. So we'd take the pony out and flock the cement block down, and the pony would be everywhere, and then you'd just move the cement block. Or if you got really hungry, you'd just drag it, and it was enough that he wouldn't like, just wander off.
He wasn't gonna, yes, yeah. He wasn't gonna be jumping any gates anyway, with that type, yeah. Yeah, I think there's a cure for everything in nature, we just have to find it, whether it's fauna or flora. Was there really early resolutions, was that higher, that you were documenting?
What's that?
It was like old resolutions.
No, no, it was, it was one of the newer ones.
It was?
Yeah, the older ones I found, it was the newer ones that I was.
Yeah, there was a white bird, then we got.
Yeah, one of the.
Was it that great, that that very long and wanted, what you have in mind?
I did, I did relate, the binders are like, they're like, uniform, so, you know, it's like, kind of the angry kind of thing, but it should be uniform. Uh, did you get my email this morning?
No.
I sent you, at least I thought I sent you, the minutes from last month, as corrected?
No, I never got it.
Oh. What's your email? Is that admin assistant?
That's De, that's Deborah.
Oh, that's Deborah?
Yes.
Okay.
So when she comes in on Thursday, she'll forward them to me, yeah, so yeah, so we will have got them. But I was saying today, like how your little, uh, extended relations.
So we, um, heavily correction, I admitted somebody's name, and then I took the watermark off and sent it to you. I'm gonna try and remember that.
No, that's fine, um, higher, because I've got some word, I can take the watermark off anyway, so, um, because that's what I've been doing with the last couple, is just when I went through the thing, I saw they.
I was even like, start signing them and send them. But if I remember, I'll send it to you, if I don't, you know to take it off, that's.
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah.
It was safer.
Yeah, it's better on, than not on, because.
Right.
Then it can be taken off, then, you know, whereas something as an approved can be passed as approved.
I saw theirs don't have draft on them, somebody who sold the minutes of it doesn't say draft on them.
For August, is it not?
Supervisor, I didn't see it. It's a little hard to tell from here, but.
Oh, yeah, I don't have it, the minutes from the workshop meeting packet.
I also thought about.
They normally always have draft on them, unless, oh, you know what that might have been, there was old minutes that was included, I think it might have been Joan who had them. And, and relating to something in there. Uh, no, I think they were old ones to do with the D C E D grant, I think, from June twenty twenty-three, I believe. But the August one should have a draft on them, I'm just, I'll just double check that, so.
What was I gonna say? Fuck love me.
That's like my brain, something around that.
Well, that's, yeah, this one, the ways that God makes sure she gets exercise, you walk into a room and you say, what am I gonna do here for? So you'll leave, you go back, you sit down, and you go, ow, and you walk back and get it, so you get some exercise.
Or you wake up in the middle of the night and remember that while it was, was another one. It's like, yeah, I got these goals, it's supposed to help your memory and your brain, I just, I keep forgetting to take them, and it's like.
Yeah, that's funny.
And I was having my catch in the reminder, and I stole it, because I'm so used to something, I might get, it doesn't register anymore, you know? You're supposed to take these, they're not an ornament.
Well, they won't help.
They'll not help, probably something on the box, that's for sure. Just waiting on fall coming now on Sunday, because my ducks.
Well, if you look at a mountain, the leaves are really starting to change.
I mean, yeah, I was saying, because there's hardly a leaf by with us this year, and there's very, very few that have started to change in our yard, yeah.
As I recall, like, in Ireland, mostly, mostly what I saw was evergreens.
Yeah, there's not, they were all taken down, um, taken like in patients, we use for the village, the workshops and stuff.
Yeah, I, it did look like there was some birch or something there, different places we were, but, uh, most of what I saw was evergreens, and most of it looked like new plantings. You know, because everything was a rock.
But it was, yeah, yeah, we don't have many trees nowadays anymore, they were used for other purposes many, many, many years ago.
Well, there's a lot of shipbuilding went on there, built out of wood, and, uh, a lot of houses, although there's a lot of stone houses there.
Yeah, there's not many timber, well, they're becoming more popular now, but generally it's all like, they're called lock, brick houses, stone houses.
You pull the, like here, pull the rocks out of field and build house out of it. Makes you easier to plow. That's why, if you look around here, there's a lot of sandstone houses. Because they, they pull them out of the field and build out of it.
Down, um, Plough Road, there's like an old ruined building. And I was all, I often wonder what the history of that is, it's like an old stone building, but it's in ruins. It's, um, almost just, you know, where Plough and Zion meet, it's, if you're on Plough, heading towards ten, it's just on the right hand side there. And it wasn't something like a historic fact, I would imagine, because you would think someone would humble it farther away, you know, for like parking or something, or.
Well.
So I don't know if it has, has to remain.
That doesn't go with the houses right there, that actually belongs to another parcel, I believe, and the substation like cut it off. So it's kind of like, eh, I don't, I don't know, but, eh, okay. We have a lot of, uh, um, ruins around here for different things. It's like leading back to five sixty-eight, when that hard bend there, where the bridges launched down. At one time, you could go straight up through there, and there was a mill up there. When I was a kid, you know, part of the water wheel was there, raceway was there, and it was a house there. And then, I just came around a corner there, that was all like a lake on the right hand side, all the way up through to that second house, and they, they used it for boating and stuff like that, and then there was a huge carriage house and blacksmith shop there. And across the street, up on the hill there, is a big, it was called the Seifert Mansion, the Seifert rolling mill people had it.
Right.
And, um, it was like a big, and, uh, big gold canoeing and.
That's a little bit, that mansion was.
The mansion's still there, the barn's gone, or the carriage house is gone. Uh, and, you know, obviously the lake is gone, or the, whatever they called it.
What happened to that, Howard? But then fellas are on there.
Oh, yeah, but washed out. And then somebody built two houses there. Uh, and then the carriage house, uh, just became a disarray and went down, and same as the blacksmith shop there. The canoe shed for the lake was actually sitting up the road here, somebody picked it up, moved it down here, and a few years ago, it just. I always joked that we had more business and industry a hundred years ago than we have today.
For sure, absolutely, because when you read the history of Burgs Rowley, and you see like the industry that went on there, and you look around with the furnaces from the seventeen eighteen hundreds, like, there's quite a few furnaces in this area, yeah.
Well, uh, yeah, there were, and then, uh, we had a rolling mill up the road here, and then we had all kinds of, uh, uh, sawmills. Um, you know, there was all kinds of stuff going on here, and Javur, we used to have a store.
Of that?
Yeah, right, of course, when we shaved it green, it was a store. My, my grandmother always used to joke that, uh, she was from a family of eight, and her parents told her nothing about how babies are born or anything like that, so she was pregnant, and they stopped at the store, my grandfather ran in to get something, and she come out, he come out, and he goes, Bill, get me home, I just pissed myself. And so he takes her home, and halfway up the steps, she delivers.
Oh, my goodness gracious, mate.
So, uh, and she said, that's not damn dumb, we were, but, you know, we had, there should be a trolley with three Javur.
Well, they're dead, yeah, but from rallying to.
If you go from rallying down through, you could even go down to Burgs Row with it.
And that's because they're trying to get back again, right?
Exactly, well, I should give you the, the lid, kind of dumb when they built like four twenty-two. If they would have left like an extra lane on either side of that, you could have ran a trolley down through, and you could have had parking rides, and people could have got all the way down through and all the way back. You know, what they want to do now is, when I was a kid, you should be able to, you could go down to Burgs Row here, catch a train, uh, under the river bridge there. There's a, when you, uh, go across that river bridge, uh, into Exeter, if you look, there's a ramp going off the left hand side, you'd be down there, and there was a train station there.
Oh, right.
So you.
I always wondered the purpose of that road, so that's what it was.
Well, actually, there was a bunch of stuff down there, there was coke storage for the, for the steel mill, there was all kinds of storage and stuff down here besides that. Uh, you hadn't done coke as, like, coal.
Like coal, yes, yeah.
Oh, it burns hotter, but, uh, so you used to be able to catch the train there, and go to Philadelphia. But it took, yeah, maybe an hour, fifteen hour and a half, and, um, you know, the last one went running, maybe seven o'clock. So seven to five, you were walking Philly, but it took a long time to get there. And you, you left there, and you zigzagged, you ended up in Norristown, and from Norristown, you went to Philadelphia, this is, was just a long ride. And I spent a little bit of yet, do again, and people are gonna go for that, you know, I mean, they wanna go. So, um, one of our kids lives on the mainland, and literally a block and a half away from his house, there's a train stop. And he gets one here and.
Even for connections to New York or anything.
Well, you're saying, uh, you could take the train into Philadelphia, um, it didn't, it didn't gently fall fit thirty to Street, safe until you have to walk up to thirty to Street Station, and they catch a train and go to New York. Now, um, you go to Lancaster, you can get the train to thirty to Street Station. Yep. But have you taken a train to New York? Pretty expensive. Uh, you're really gonna talk yourself into that trip. Uh, what we do is occasionally, when we go into the city, we'll drive to Whitakers University.
Right.
They have a free parking garage, and the train takes you up right up there. So we, we just take it from there into the city, and then come back the same way. That makes it a little bit more equitable. Well, you said buses going to New York at that, but it was like, three hour ride. Been a while since I was in New York.
A while since I have?
Been a while since I was up there.
Okay, as long as, I'm just thinking the last time was I there?
We were up after nine eleven. Like, uh, pretty damn dirty city.
Yeah, like London's almost the same, did you get to London?
I don't, no.
That's insane, see, when you come home after a day and you want, you just feel dirty and groggy, and your meals.
See, the point I liked about Ireland up there was, you know, it felt clean, you know, you didn't see the trash around, and I didn't see any homeless people. No, like I said, I, I just felt a little clean, the only bad thing was crossing the street. Where are you still looking right, you don't look left.
It's a good job you weren't driving on that. Anyway, when I go back, I wouldn't drive, I wouldn't drive, but I wouldn't trust myself, you know, because it's more natural to drive.
On the right side. I don't know what it is, but the, you know, the English, you know, but I felt for sure Ireland would change because, uh, they're i- i- independent country, yeah, but.
Those old carriages just stayed.
We could imagine, like crossing a border in the Northern Ireland, no.
It's like the other side of the road.
Other side of the road.
I always think even before twenty-two, with those barriers, I've neglected so that they could be moved, like two or three of them, so if there's ever uh, a accident or something on one side, they just look, they're very dull, like cars, but you know, and keep them, and keep them going, like at least.
Well, you know, like, so, uh, on the bridges, in New Jersey, they have barriers that they just move like that.
Right.
Yeah, they're, they're shorter barriers, but they have a, a machine just moves them over lane and. Yeah, so often, and that's why I don't like traveling interstates, you know, so often you're on an interstate, there's an accident.
That's it, you're going away?
Yep, I mean, we come back from, uh, South Carolina one time, we sat in the interstate for six hours. You know, a couple accidents, because we call them rubber neckers.
Yeah. Rubber neck, I don't think you know that here over here. There we go.
So, you know, it's like, people say to me, hey, did you see what's going on over here? No, I'm going this way. I don't care, I don't care what's going on over there.
Yeah, yeah, like, bang, another accident. Isn't another storm supposed to be coming on, on the Hudson?
Well, I thought it was supposed to rain today.
Yeah, we were supposed to have some rain today.
And I, I was out earlier today, and I just got a little mist, then that was it, but, uh, you know, I thought it was supposed to rain. We're supposed to go to an outdoor wedding on Saturday.
What's the matter, Nick?
Uh, I think we're now at, uh, oh, no, now it's clear. The, the other day I looked at it, it was rain, like fifty percent chance of rain, I was like, nah.
Is that an apple or an android?
So now it's just rain Wednesday and Thursday. So.
I think it might close the worst of the weather forecast. Yeah, Saturday's looking good here.
Yeah.
Just have to make sure you have a matching umbrella, bigger ones.
Okay. So in Dublin, it's sixty-five to fifty today.
Yeah, they're having hot weather over there, the mountains.
Yeah, so it looks like it's in mid to upper sixties all week.
And in North Scotland's the same, it's like they're all like, on the same pace.
And, and I've been watching, so. So, right, where's it at here? We're watching the sunset, oh, here, sunset was seven thirty. So there, a little bit more than twelve hours of daylight right now. And I'm thinking we're like fourteen right now. Uh, now Scotland's uh, looks like the high is only in the fifties, uh, most of this week.
Oh, yeah, I was listening to the news and they're saying by the north of Scotland, it's.
I think his nephew lives in Edinburgh. And uh.
Okay, folks, the executive session continues, I am there, you two land. So my friend wrote that I didn't wanna shout my way to whatever. I don't know how long they'll be, but it does surround litigation that I've filed against the township and to date have been successful.
So, so where are we at? What are we talking about? We're talking about sunsets and and daylight, so here, um, quarter seven, it's getting light and sunset's at seven o'clock. So it's, you can actually get more daylight over there now than we are. So, cause, I mean, his nephew could find out how short days are, don't he?
Yes, because it does become darker and darker and it's probably, it leaves in the mornings before it gets clear as well. Do you pay them out like within hours?
And then, and then it's dark again, like what, five o'clock or something like that?
Yeah, for that.
Yeah. So, so now that I know, I'm gonna watch that.
So the time changes after the water so there. When the waters, this kicks in, that's, you do, you'll get probably about seven, eight hours, eight minutes.
You know, maybe people don't know this, but that's why the Irish and the Scots have been to the polls.
Somewhere to go in the dark nights, something to learn, man.
Yeah, that like, Linn's nephew, he, he just uh, they play trivia and they they do a kind of stuff at the, at the.
Yeah, public courses are very big.
Yeah. It was funny, we were eating dinner at the, in Edinburgh one night. And the trivia question was, what's the gobella? And I looked at Linn, they go, well, that's it, I said. I said, what? I said, it's the area between your eyes. And he just looked at me like, why do you know that? And she didn't know it.
Yeah, sometimes these pieces of useless information aren't so useless, are they? It's things like you remember things and you think like, are these facts that you remember from?
My my dad used to play trivia on, so so he would do like historical trivia and stuff like that, it's like. You know, what was the name of the horse that George Washington rode at in uh, at Fallowford? And the horse's name was Blue Boy, but the next question to say is, is uh, who's uh. What horse did George Washington own that he rode at uh, at Fallowford? And then Blue Boy was borrowed. He was still down behind, he just got shot, uh, we're shouting from it, but it's gonna be his own.
Yeah, that's right, there you go, points.
Oh, a lot of uh, emergency equipment going on down this highway last couple minutes.
There's a accident on foot, maybe two of them over.
Oh, yeah. I think this past night, people have got so bad sense of driving, like even driving through the town, they're not stopping or stuff, like the stop signs or anything, they're just. Like, just one's name, so you say three or something.
Every weekend that they have races up at Maple Grove, they come out uh, Maple Grove Road and they never stop going to turn right over at uh, Route Ten.
Do you know where Maple, what he's talking about?
Yes.
Are you familiar with Maple Grove? They've been there, oh, a long time.
Long before our time, I think.
Been a long time, and I think they're a good business, a good family, or sold, I guess it's been sold, but uh.
Yeah, correct me if I'm.
We have a nice, we have a nice community. It's but uh. Divergent and it's changing, but we have a nice.
They just need to learn to stop.
A uniform and making stop.
Uh, actually, not always. The sheriff department's out there frequently directing traffic.
We were there Sunday and the sheriff was sitting right at the corner where you come out from Maple Grove and the people in front of us, one of them was going left and ran the stop sign.
Yep.
And they just sat there, they don't.
Most of the time, I'm concerned with executive sessions and the appropriateness of that. They're supposed to be for personnel and legal matters and far too often. Someone will stray into a lot of other areas and the number one reason should be, we are here for to serve the public. Public needs to be informed and see their elected officials and there is no harm in the information except certain sensitive matters. And that's been a commonality, a lot of cases about violations of that, because the business should be conducted in front of the people. That way everybody knows.
Yeah, but you know what, uh, we take them, you know, we wonder why people don't come to the meeting, there's no information here for us.
Well, I would like to think that we can do a better job with the website, we can get more information on there. There's a cost, as you're aware, to put information here, you never know if you'll get ten people or three people. So it's a difficult thing, but I've always said that we don't do a good enough job on getting, you know, the information out. Sometimes I think that's because there are times when uh, you know, there are hot button issues. And I'd like to go beyond the the basic legal requirements of advertising ordinance or not, I'd like to get the people. Engaged a little earlier in the process, that they can say, oh, we're having this ordinance or we're having this.
That ordinance should have a publisher on the township website.
The solicitation ordinance?
Yeah.
You know, I was, I was solicited today, I think, at my office. My staff was, I think it was a roving paving company, between windows and paving companies, blacktop sealers, what are some of the other ones?
Well, I don't.
I mean, it's a window replacement.
Some uh.
And in particular, in particular, our older people, and I'm not, it's not necessarily an age thing, but sometimes, you know, you're getting up there years, you're living alone, people knock at your doors.
Somebody to talk to.
Somebody to talk to, sometimes we sign stuff, you know, we don't think of, we get ourselves into.
That's what I think is done.
Maybe next time, well, if we could have a special meeting for the township residents and put it out there, put it on the webs, see if they can use that or two, that would get things out. Have people a choice of electronic or hard copies and bring them in and have their own copy and they could see what they would like to see from.
And and the other problem becomes, we have, sometimes the people will say, well, you know, for instance, our mailing address here is Burgford.
Mm-hmm.
We are not in the borough of Burgford, so the the person who will do the solicitation said, well, I didn't think I was in Burgford. Now, there are signs posted that we we've gotten our our act together, if you will.
Yeah.
On all the main thoroughfares in and out of the township, signs are posted, but I routinely get, living right on the Robinson Exeter border, I routinely get. People thinking they're in Exeter and, you know, which is interesting, because sometimes when I ask for their Exeter permit or the Burgford permit, they don't have that. So, uh, while I commend their entrepreneurial spirit.
How would you suggest we would fix that, Mr. Fugler?
Say that again?
Would you have a suggestion how we could?
Well, this ordinance will will help, we just gotta get our our act together.
Sure, if people need to call. You know, if, you know, if somebody's knocking on your door and they don't have a solicitation permit, you, they should call.
A lot of times how people don't know the ass, they just, they just, somebody knocks on your door, you're caught, a little off guard, maybe, you're unprepared, you don't know they're, you don't know they're coming. But, you know, it's also, when you have a development and you can go house to house to house, that's a little different than going out a road, going up a long driveway. So it's not necessarily equal throughout the township, the problem. But the ordinance will cover the ultimate, you know, the entire township, obviously, and I and I think this is a good solution, we just gotta get everything in in order.
I also don't like all the predatory calls.
That's a whole nother issue.
I'm from the electric company. You know, and then and I said, you work for, you know, Med Ed, well, then you're not for my electric company.
And they're, they they insist that they're representing Med Ed, they know, like, we're, you're, we're representing, you're an equitable. And you just have to like say a name and number and we'll call you back.
And Medicare, hey, I'm from Medicare. Uh, no, you're not, they don't call.
Well, all telephone things are another issue, but.
And you gotta keep signing a for do not call list. And the thing that cracks me up at the electric company is they're required to give out our phone numbers.
Yes, and they have, um.
You know, who'd come up with that?
But you have to opt out of them not giving out your number?
I don't know, you got, we've never given the option.
Yeah, I I I just see, um, saying that from the public, they see that we here like, they're on the year, they ask her.
Okay, do you go to the company, do you see website?
If you can contact them and um, they will, they'll look at you on, like, if, you know, they're much, you won't be sad.
We'll put that in the first newsletter. Tired of that, I leave Med Ed calls.
I think a newsletter would be great, but that's another thing we're trying to, I'm trying to go to the solicitation permit, we can keep a list of them on the website. So if people go and ask them and they can check the website, you know, then if they're not on there, that's illegal, then they might get a call in.
Yeah.
You know, so, um, that that's another thing that we're talking about.
Uh, well, the other thing is, you know, so there should be a number for you to call, whether it's, you know, the office or here, for them to take something active. Because, you know, um, you know, somebody calls and, uh, you know, nobody gave down directions on what to do with the call. Kind of kind of, children can, uh, take a message and it'll die for however long, they'll be long gone.
They just give like the non-emergency number and get them that way.
Yeah, my problem with the non-emergency number is if somebody's not here, it reaches to the nine-one-one center.
Yeah.
Well, the Phillies do not play tonight, or do they? The Phillies.
Oh, I have no idea.
Not a baseball fan?
I am not.
Might I ask what the favorite sport is in Ireland?
Oh, it has to be football, soccer.
Gaelic football is very popular and soccer, because Gaelic football, it's like a mix between rugby and soccer, kind of, and then.
Darts.
Yeah.
Who's that, darts?
That's that's a winter sport.
Okay, that's fair.
Yeah, soccer, soccer's called football over there.
Yeah, and and I'm telling you, you're driving around, that's OIC, people play them. No matter what, it's the middle of the day, somebody's playing.
And rugby, rugby's a popular game too, those are the main three.
There's a, there's a beach um, in Ireland, and seems to be, it's in the southern part. That was listed as National Geogra, yeah, National Geographic's list of top ten beaches in the world. So we happened to go by this and said, I hate it, let's stop. And then the beach is not very good, waters fifty-four degrees and they're in swimming. But the thing that started me on a mouse, or caught my attention on a mouse, was they had some beautiful restrooms in. And people would come down to the beach, throw a beach towel around, take your clothes off, put your suit on, take the towel off. And I'm thinking, well, why would you go in? And women, like, this woman came down, she grabs a button, pulls, you know, pulls the bottom hair off, takes the towel off and then pulls the top hair off. It was like.
Cultural, it's cultural.
Lots of cultures, that's what.
Just the way.
Cultures all around. Not that you were looking or anything, Harold.
Well, you know what, I'm up there, chup, 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 hey, fix your suit or something, I was putting my eyes, oh, oh.
And if you don't mind me asking, what, what led you to Robinson Township?
I don't suppose.
So, I mean, but he was not from Ireland, was he?
No, he had a, he's a contractor, so he had like a contract over here and cost time over fifty-five thousand, someone's down to drive him. Up and down the Delaware County all the time, we came up here, plus he wanted, um, kids to grow up somewhere like.
Like this?
Where it was well, yeah.
Cool, that, you do dual citizenship or?
Me, no, I just took, I just kept my green card, but they're all, um, married.
Cause I I was surprised they were born here.
One was born in Ireland, one was born here, yeah.
Cool.
But and then my husband, he naturalized, and then the other two boys, I married a pastor, so they could get you with a.
But I'm I'm almost sure that you could have dual citizenship for.
Yeah.
Cool, Ireland and US.
Yes, you can. So whenever we fly out in one lane, they have the other lane.
So, so you have, one child is a US citizen?
Both are.
Both are?
Mm-hmm.
Well, I think it's a great township. I think it's attractive and for most affordable. Think we've got a good school district. You know, it's a little big.
Yeah, it's just a lot of sprawl, yes, yeah.
It's a big township, a big school district, but. I wouldn't trade it for anywhere else, it's what I like.
Our our school district is really spread out.
And they have a great football team at the minute. They're doing real good, real well.
At at my, I'm the opinion, I'm the public all in this, that schools should be teaching kids sports that they can play their entire lives. And that's not one of them.
That's what I said, like, if you wanna play football, you have to live at school, because you have chances that you're never gonna play it the rest of your life.
Right.
Because they'll have like, like older baseball leagues and things like that, but they're like.
Even soccer, there's people playing soccer league, you know.
Yes, yeah.
But.
As for football, that isn't.
Even pickleball.
That just like became crazy, didn't it, that's?
It did, I, you know, I'd never heard of it and uh, when we were down in Kew and somebody.
Oh, let's go to the ball, I see up here, Hellcrash Nine Bay, it's the tennis club, they're doing pickleball, it's, oh.
Oh, yeah? Okay, how's he have? Ah, it's holding it up.
Only discussion was of litigation and how to adjourn.
Say that again?
Only discussion was of litigation and how to adjourn.
If you need a motion to adjourn, that might be a way.
All right, all right, so we're back in session eight twenty. During the segment, we can talk about some new personnel issues, maybe we might make a motion to adjourn at eight twenty. I think I'm going to adjourn at eight twenty. Do you have a second?
I'll second.
From the favor? Did you want it?
I did, I.
I did, I.
Hey, Scott, where does where does he live?
Who, what?
The guy that was pulling.
Oh. He lives pretty on Hick Creek Road, up by like an army line, when he was at the firehouse.
Oh, okay, guys, guys there pretty quick.
Yeah, they were, he was there when it went out, so he jumped us pretty quick.
Hey, I've seen him a couple of times.
Yeah, no, he's he's a, he's a, he's EMT, runs, works for hours for the EMT, this is.
This was the first one for.
We're working on actually those running cars, we're on a lot of that calls. I'm working on trying to work out from power.
Can you get signatures, guy, is that happening?
Cause I think those the, you know, the, that situation, you know, CVA, TIA, or RAS, sure, absolutely, but there's a lot of.
I I well, I've got, this is just the only one just for Jack.
We we don't need to run all of them.
No.
Okay. There you go, thank you, sir.
Does anyone need anything else?
Uh, general question.
Oh, you have a question?
Yeah.
Okay.
That's two words.
Yes.
It was Chan, I believe it was, I believe that was.
Nobody.
You want to take that?
Hand over by Greg or something in August, I think that.
That was the one that I think was changed.
That was changed, and that, isn't that, that's the one where we attached all of those, we attached all of the, yeah.
Make sure I didn't, okay.
We attached different, um, acknowledgements.
Second, that's official, so they're engineered to do it.
I think so, yeah, if it if for some reason it's not, well, more than that, oh, sure.
Well, well, okay, that's right, that's right.
Whatever whatever cleanup items they need, but I think we're getting them, I think we need a dedication in the road, that should be efficient, because that documented, right?
Right.
Kill step one, there is one stone.
Correct, okay.
Alright, I will see you later then. And I will not be here until after my morning.
Okay, yeah, yeah, no worries, no, you don't need to.
Yes, I will see you later, these are heaven.
Hi, Phil.
Well. Can we store it?
I think Chris has them all ready, ready, sure, so, there's nothing else to sign on any of the checks. And that there's resolutions, but they were just returned something that were. Okay, we got your old dress up and then please pick up. We could, I don't know if they went down. Oh, she signed on, I do have some things for you to sign, so. Take care of these, these things, these bros.
The text good?
Yeah, she did, she only two, so she's doing the same.
Who just goes in the second room?
George, two things, George signed in.
She'll be doing that here.
Well, just figured, since there's too many of us here, and I figured wanted to tell you all, all of us in here for.
Well, there's four of us here, anyway, I don't think that's an issue. Is that the advice of council, Chris?
No.
That we, so we have Joy in another room signing the checks, is that what's happening?
No.
Excuse me.
She's signing.
Oh, I went to grab water, she walked out the back.
Go ahead, what are we signing?
Well, maybe we need solicitor advice on that. We're in the garage signing the checks. I don't think this is necessary.
She signed the checks downstairs.
Yeah, and I I just left the room to sign checks, because I figured that was some of the problem, that you didn't want everybody here all the time, so.
No, I wouldn't, I like everybody when appropriate, I like everybody, Chris.
I just thought you didn't want everybody in the same room.
No, 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 we gotta do the, we gotta file the sunshine, all that, we gotta do.
Still, she's gonna be done by two minutes, I don't know.
Well, she was complaining that I would sign checks and here I am.
Well, you gotta sign these things.
No, I don't think it's, I'm one of the signs.
Phillies.
One nothing. Yeah, one nothing, second.
It's your first. You're on the board, you wanna come around.
You go get my beer.
Oh, yeah, no good.
It's like a, it's like a, yeah, I got it off like three times from people at the crib.
I have no signatures here too.
It's okay, it's okay. He said, he said you're gonna get some, we have some goods and bad.
Guess my wife don't be bad ideas like that. That rollover, Main Street Union.
Oh, is that what it is?
Yeah, it's like a motorcycle and a car and a deer and. Where is that at? There are Main Street and Unions.
Main Street and Union, seven point four.
In Union, in Union Township, seven twenty-four in Union.
So we, so we took Township records to the garage, that's what we did.
And they, uh.
Nothing different going over there, it's not, it's still Townshipville.
We've signed here forever.
How how far then?
I don't know.
It just, it just said, uh, Main Street, Union Township, I didn't, it didn't have like an actual location.
I I think it changes things.
Twenty-one forty-seven each main.
I was gonna say, I think.
Twenty-one forty-seven?
I think it changes when you hit Union, uh, uh, like where the river affects used to be, I think it changes the names. So I think it's called Bayon from that, it's close enough.
Well, that's pretty much shit, past shed. It's only east of Shen Road.
Oh, is that right?
Yeah, I suppose that little bar, right on the right. That one, is it?
You speak, Baby's Tavern or something like that.
Oh, yeah, it's about a couple miles east of Shen Road. Yeah, but. Yeah, Gear Jammer.
Gear Jammer.
Yeah, a little river, yeah, yeah. Do we, do I?
I think it was. Who is Baby's Tavern?
Yeah. No, we're good with signing.
We don't have any?
No, I think I signed whatever I needed to sign.
Okay, you you did.
Okay.
You did, the only one I had for you was that one resolution.
Okay.
Anything for me?
Excellent.
With these, no, I'm waiting on.
But that that's.
No, we're not signing these though.
We're up here.
There's others there.
Yeah, there's a rollover, motorcycle, the deer was involved.
Say keep, all kinds of stuff.
Deer riding. A deer, they said they, it was class three, one was class three, one was up walking around. Three, like minor injuries.
Three, minor.
Ones.
I'll get deer maker.
Sure. I'm in.
Yeah, everybody's on this one, it's that key.
You have someplace to be, Harold?
Me?
Yeah.
Oh, not really, you can't call me, Lee.
Saying that, I'm just asking.
No, I don't have school till seven o'clock tomorrow.
I have run the school tomorrow. I know, I know. I ran quicker than that. But I, I came home overnight, my seat was empty, I picked it up.
You were scheduled for tomorrow.
And I cleaned up my driveway about twenty fifty feet.
Now they were emailing us to tell me about that.
It works or something, something else.
So I think that's, I think I, I think I. I'm still working for the back of the roads.
Oh, I think the mechanism is, and this is why I'm having a email, when something's, once we have our our letters.
Blowers, yeah, somebody bounced it back.
Emailing, then I can read things like the A A C, and there.
What a power of.
Situation, I mean, I can see all of that, if something's left out of a meeting, it's, yes, it's more reading, but more information is a good thing.
That's true. The, um, the thing with the one store, John, I have to check those to make sure that they're not coming in on, um, the litigation because of that, so that's why it takes me a little more time to sign, so what I've been doing is just going.
Well, I think she knows to keep that separate, she's a very fine lawyer, she's a fine lawyer.
She is, she is. She said when it comes to me, I don't necessarily, I I see it coming in from somebody, and it's just a, I make sure it's not something I forward on about.
Typical evening, now we'll go check on my goods. My typical.
That's the one we did. I thought you were a baseball fan.
Go first, you gotta.
That'd be former.
Where's that?
Four, and go on in this guy.
Yeah, okay, any problems?
I've seen footprints, I got, I'm getting a bunch. But I go, in a sense, I'm hoping on the road, there's not.
Switching and outside of the.
Was the one you ever signed?
I would say my goal does not have to get in that, like, but I've seen examples where great pyramids have held their own.
Yeah.
But I would. But I have a sense around the. It's my first experience with the door roll. I guess it's a surprise. They're not getting any smaller.
He stops eating.
Twelve o'clock yesterday morning, thirty foot by by.
But they're almost always not coming.
Normally. See, I should have arrived at, right? I was right behind them on the camera, like two thirty. Yeah, right, I don't, yeah, I should have gone. And they came, and they came back at five thirty PM, paid tax again, no, I think we went down both halves and. And then we got out and came back.
I said, hey, nice challenge, you know?
You got one to have or or not challenge.
But this is the one, there's two pictures, those three pictures, so.
How did you make a decision?
So, were you busy that night then?
No, we started, when I happened to be walking out the back door.
That's not for me, so.
Oh, yeah, I slept right in the.
It's not for me, so.
Went down there.
I have a decision made.
I went, I went out the back door, would you look at me and listen instead of avoiding?
I'm talking to him right now.
And I'm talking to you.
Well, that's okay, I get to you, if you're not talking then.
I went out the back door to to leave, and Chris said, do you wanna sign?
You, after I talked to him.
I'm not talking, I just signed, paid this stuff as I went out the door.
Chandler took signature files.
I'm supposed to write.
I'm a little unusual, this first sign on, you know, those, I don't know.
I didn't, I didn't think that.
Okay, well, are we done, do we have everything we need to do? Well, alright, okay, then, let's get home, we get, what else we gotta do? Alright, well, good night to everyone.
I got one.
Have a good night.